Okay, we're going to call. Oops. I'm going to call the meeting of City Council's special meeting Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, to order. It is on time, 5:30 PM. And Madam Clerk, would you call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Bauchau.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gambler.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. First up is executive session. Executive session is due to last-
Madam Chair, I think you do, per our council rules, have to call the yeas and nays on all votes.
Six, zero.
Okay. Six, zero. Sorry, do you have that? Okay. First up is executive session. Executive session is due to go from 5:30 to 6:30. We hopefully will be back to see you at 6:30.
I have to read the-
Sorry, I'm new at this job. Give me a little slack here. Okay. I'm going to read you the... Okay. "To evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment pursuant to RCW 42.10.110."
One G.
One G. Okay, calling the meeting back to order. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment. Okay, public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the council, three minutes per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or a PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM the end of the business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that the council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. I'm going to apologize right up front if I do something to somebody's name. Okay, first up, I have, oh, Tom and Joyce.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to only take three minutes. We're going to tag each other. Mailers, lived in Smamish at 25819 with East First Place, and-
I'm Joyce Bottenberg. I live at 21905 Southeast 20th Street, Smamish. Been there in the city for 33 years.
So, tonight, we have really good news to share, and that is that a small group has been working behind the scenes to launch Smamish's very first senior center. And Joyce is handing out a flyer that you may have already seen around town or on Facebook. The details are that we've been working with the city and the Boys and Girls Club. We'll have one meeting a week from 10:00 to 12:30. We're going to be having a range of events, including activities, some light chair yoga, for example, or tai chi games, can't go wrong with bingo, and speakers will meet every Wednesday. The most important thing to know is we have an open house coming up on February 5th. You guys are all invited, and anyone in the public is invited to check it out. After that, we'll meet every Wednesday, 10:00 to 12:30. And as a reminder, the reason we're doing this, the needs assessment identified seniors as one of five critical needs area. Joyce is just going to comment on that real quick, and then we'll be done.
From page 37 of the needs assessment about direct service for seniors, "to explore multiple ways of expanding social and recreational program for seniors aimed at physical health, mental health, mental acuity, and social exchange. This could include things like bridge club, chair yoga, choir, meditation, silver sneakers, including program of special interests to different cultures, multi-generational programming, and programming that is free or low cost." Everyone is welcome. We need volunteers. Look for our flyer. Visit us on Facebook, and talk to us around town, or send us an email to smamishseniors@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. We hope to see you there on the 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very exciting. Okay, next on my list is Peyton Steever.
I have a PowerPoint. So, last April, I came before the council in a public comment to advocate for our gondola system, and that was a previous council. And since then, we've had another snow event, so I figured I'd follow up on it and let the council know some of the things I've learned talking to people over the last eight months. All right. Next up. Oh, there's a click over here. Hey. Control now. So, I just wanted to say I was inspired to come in by being stuck waiting for a bus last week. So, last week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, the buses stopped running on 2/28th. Everything was routed off of the plateau, and Metro refused to drive up the hill. I had trouble getting to work. I know a lot of people had trouble getting out of the house at all entirely. So, yeah, we pay good money as the city for this bus to serve the core of the city. And that's part of the reason why it has been expanded in frequency and in span of So, if we had a gondola, that would be avoided. And the reason why that'd be avoided is that gondolas are extremely weather resistant, especially to ice and snow. And they handle steep hills like the ones we have around the plateau, both coming up onto it and also internally extremely well. They're also very good for trips internally, in a way that buses often aren't, because they have high frequency. So, you can catch a gondola very fast, almost like a horizontal elevator, more than a transit service like we're used to. And if we choose the correct technology, you can really grow with the city. So, this slide was in my previous presentation, but I wanted to point out that sound transit, the federal government and private partners can help us pay for this kind of thing. Microsoft already helps us pay for the 269. From the feedback I got from the community, they are concerned about privacy and noise, among other things. So, there's an animated GIF up there of the Singapore Light Rail that shows an auto-opaking window, so that the windows go white when they pass by people's apartments or houses. The noise is also in the app being mitigated by design. So, the transportation master plan has been rolling along. I submitted that gondola has one of the projects on it, and it's done relatively well compared to a lot of things. The council can modify the transportation master plan to include a study on a transit spine or on a gondola specifically, if they so desire. And so, I ask that the council consider that when the time comes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Could you email your slides to us?
Yes. I'm going to clean up a little bit of the grammar, and then I'll email the slides to the council.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so the next one, and I'm going to really apologize for this. Annika and...
Lyshri.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Annika Razdan.
Good evening. My name is Lyshri Rundit. We're both juniors at Eastlake High School, and we're members of many public health and climate change organizations, such as Washington YCS, 350 Eastside, and Eastlake Future Health Professionals. Today, we'd like to briefly express our desire for the K-4C collaboration to be given a consideration at the city council. The last few weeks have been marked by a series of unfortunate circumstances, like the snow days, causing the vote on K-4C to be delayed, and we would like to take this opportunity to verbalize public support for it. We know many of you are hesitant about the K-4C collaboration, but the first step of Smamish's engagement with K-4C would be to simply measure the impact Smamish is currently having on the environment.
It has been nearly 13 years since this last assessment, and taking this first step will allow Smamish to adjust its goals accordingly and the necessary timeline to achieve a cleaner future. K-4C does not dictate the methods for cities to achieve that cleaner, better future, and this works in our favor, since Smamish is so unique as a newer, smaller city, and the steps to take after that are completely undecided. Here are some ways we can participate in K-4C without making radical and expensive changes.
So, we brainstormed a couple of ideas. Since Smamish is pretty small, centralized public transit, like the metro currently being built in Seattle, isn't feasible. Instead, we could focus on expanding public transit between Smamish, Redmond, and Bellevue, which would not only aid high schoolers needing to get around, but also workers who commute to Bellevue for local tech companies. This would both reduce carbon emissions and traffic levels, which are a concern for Smamish. Another major aspect of the K-4C collaboration is increased commitment to renewable energy resources.
So, in the past, local high schools, such as Eastlake, have been partly powered by solar panels, but unfortunately, they were neglected and eventually left unused. By having at least partly solar-powered local buildings, we can meet the K-4C's goals of creating a higher green electricity percentage. Solar panels are not as costly as they were in the past, nearly decreasing 60% in the last 10 years. We understand that it is difficult for buildings with infrastructure already in place to go 100% green energy, but even partly investing in the green electricity, it brings us one step closer to K-4C's goals.
Furthermore, Smamish can also work on energy conservation by working with Puget Sound Energy, which currently provides free services to assess how energy can be conserved in local buildings. These are just a few of the ideas that we, as high schoolers, have brainstormed, and we have no doubt that the city of Smamish can come up with even more innovative ways to collaborate with K-4C. Smamish is a vignette of Washington's natural beauty, and its future lies in your hands. By consenting to Smamish's engagement with K-4C, you're upholding public service and leaving Smamish a better place than you found it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a question from Deputy Mayor.
Not a question, just a statement. So, at our next regular city council meeting, we are due to take up the K-4C letter to King County, so that's February 4th.
Okay, next on our list is, oh dear. Mr. Ritter.
Can I follow the second student's presentation, please?
Oh, sure. Okay, so I have Isabel. Then Mr. Ritter.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Cowie, and I'm a junior at Eastlake High School, and a member of both the Environmental Club and Washington YCS. When K-4C was first introduced, it was really encouraging to teen activists like myself, Annika, and Lyshri, since it showed a recognition in local government that action needs to be taken in order to help protect the earth. As I understand, K-4C's original plan was quite ambitious, and the consenting vote for it is, and the consenting vote is for the revised K-4C plan. As a member of the next generation that is going to inherit this beautiful world from you, action on the K-4C seems very clear to me. Investing now and committing to a gradual plan to secure a clean future for Smamish means that we are one step closer to overcoming the irreversible climate change that scientists predict. Smamish engagement with K-4C could even involve a teen program, since staff shortage is an issue. All of you joined public service to make Smamish a better place for you and your children, and the children of Smamish are speaking out. Please keep our future in mind when voting on K-4C. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Phil Ritter, and I'm a resident of Smamish. I'm a CPA, financial consultant, working with nonprofit affordable housing developers, and a member of the steering committees of 350 Eastside and People for Climate Action, and a board member of Community Climate Solutions. 350 Eastside has about 3,000 local residents on our email list, and who support our mission to mobilize for a transition to 100% renewable energy for all, no fossil fuel projects anywhere, and not a penny more for dirty energy. We're actively supporting the Sunrise Movement and the Green New Deal, and are working on the campaign to create a public utility district to provide electricity to eastern King County. People for Climate Action was formed in 2018 by a coalition of local environmental groups, including the Sierra Club, Environment Washington, Citizens Climate Lobby, Climate Solutions, Sustainability Ambassadors, Indivisible Eastside, and Eastside Audubon Society, for the express purpose of helping local cities like Smamish develop climate action plans, which actually reduce greenhouse gas emissions. PCA, People for Climate Action, has active city groups in more than a dozen cities in King County. PCA volunteers have studied the climate action plans of a number of cities like Portland, Oregon, which have actually cut their greenhouse gas emissions while experiencing population and economic growth. The King County Council, with the support of PCA, recently passed a resolution and a budget appropriation of $65,000 to develop a toolkit for city climate action plans that can be customized for the needs of each city. PCA has experienced volunteer engineers and other professionals to help city staff with the documentation needed to participate in this joint multi-city effort, and to help organize public meetings to obtain local citizen input. Our organization supports these young people in their efforts to get us moving in response to climate change, and look forward to supporting the city of Smamish in your efforts to join with the other local cities to expand on the positive work done by the K-4C collaboration since 2014. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes everybody that I have. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Next on the agenda, we've got the consent calendar.
I'll move it as long as I can pull item six.
Okay, so I...
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion is item six. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a first and a second to approve consent calendar with item six removed, which we will move and put...
Unfinished.
And we will put it under unfinished business, of course.
Seventeen.
Number...
Seventeen.
Eighteen. Seventeen?
Sixteen A.
Sixteen A. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar?
As amended.
Pardon?
As amended.
As amended. Minus six, which is now going to be sixteen A. Say aye.
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 Against? Okay, that would be a seven, zero for the record.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have got presentations and proclamations. First is, it is National School Choice Week, and we have got a proclamation for that. And Deputy Mayor is going to read that proclamation.
I'll read this. "National School Choice Week proclamation. Whereas, all children in Smamish should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas, Smamish recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Smamish to be successful adults, and whereas, quality of education is critically important to the economic vitality of Smamish, and whereas, Smamish is home to a multitude of excellent education options for which parents can choose for their children, and whereas, educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas, our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas, School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for the effective educational options. Now, therefore, Mayor Karen Moran, on behalf of the Smamish City Council, does hereby recognize January 26th through February 1st, 2020, as Smamish School Choice Week. And I call this observation to the attendance of all of our citizens."
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, next, if we have, do we have anybody here that is going to, that is going to be doing the interviews for the arts, human services, or any of the commissions that is sitting here in the audience? If you do, just raise your hand. Okay, I guess we don't. Okay, so the next week, okay.
Yeah, Melanie Anderson, city clerk.
Okay.
Mayor and deputy mayor. I just wanted to bring your attention to the fact that we had a commissioner drop out today.
Okay.
That was Lori Creek. We have substituted in Matt, no, Matt Ferguson. And then, we had someone drop from the Human Services Commission last week, and we substituted in Tasha Lamore.
Okay.
And so, we'll start bringing them in, starting with, there are several...
Yeah, we're going to start with the Arts Commission.
There are several people who couldn't come tonight because of the rescheduling.
Right.
So, I guess you'll just have to do your best with that, since we don't really have another time to reschedule.
Okay. Counsel, I'm going to ask that we, since we do have a lot of people that we have to speak with, I'm going to ask that we start off with limiting ourselves to two questions. If we find that we have somebody we want to ask more questions to, that we stop and then, you know, then go say, hey, you know, can we go to three questions? And then everybody can move on to a third question or something. But, so that we're all in sync on how many questions we ask. Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
Do you have a set of questions we're going to ask everyone? So that we ask them the same two?
I think you can just ask whatever you want to ask. So, I think we can ask whatever we want.
You can ask whatever you'd like.
We're just going to do two questions for the whole council, right? Or not to a piece, I'm assuming, because that would be a lot, just to...
Welcome.
Hi.
So, take a deep breath. And maybe you could tell us your name, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. My name is Janet Hild. We've lived in Smamish about 15 and a half years. We live on Eastlake Smamish, down near the lake. I have five children, all of which we've raised here in Smamish, and my youngest is now 15 and a sophomore at Skyline.
Oh.
So, soon to be an empty nester.
Wow. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to just ask a couple questions.
Sure.
And, you know, so, it'll be pretty easy.
Okay.
Okay, so, council members, I'm going to look here. So, Deputy Mayor Bauchau.
Hi, thank you for coming this evening. I'm interested in what drove you to apply for the Arts Commission, and what of the community art that you've seen has been your favorite that the Arts Commission has done?
I'm passionate about art and design. I've owned my own business for, well, my current business I've owned for almost 14 years, and I just, I have designed a lot of products, been in the design space my entire life, and so I just love art and design, and I love Smamish, so it's a perfect fit. I love the artwork that's on display now. I haven't, I've just started to learn about some of the things that the Art Commission has done. I happened to meet Claridell at Sahali, and was fascinated by her, and she sort of filled me in on a lot of things that she was doing, and I was absolutely fascinated by some of the projects that she was doing. And so, that got me a little bit more interested in some of the other things that they were doing.
Okay, counsel, do you have any other questions? Okay, I have one. So, in what, what is, what kind of art do you specialize or like to do?
Like I said, I have a business. I design home decor products. I've done interior design. I've done some architecture. I've done painting. I do oil, watercolor, acrylic. I've studied art and painting, but I've also studied sculpture. Like I said, interior design. I've been working in the interior design business for most of my life. Recently, started getting involved in some of the garden clubs and landscaping design. Let's see, what else?
You sound busy.
Yeah, I've done art, been an art docent in pretty much all the schools.
Oh, wow. Okay. Okay, I actually do have one more question for you, and it is from Councilmember Trine. Oh, Gambler.
Have you served, have you served at any other public committees?
Public committees, no. Other than volunteering in the schools and teaching in the, teaching in the schools as a volunteer, and not public, no. Private, yes, but not public.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
It was that easy.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Anne Cruz, and I'm applying for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, why don't you give us a little bit of your background, and what excites you, and what brought you here to put your application in for the commission?
Okay, great. Well, I've been a resident here for 22 years, and I have enjoyed the parks and the forests that we have here, hiking mainly. And my, the reason I moved to the Seattle area to start with was to enjoy the wilderness, to hike, to backpack, to climb mountains, to ski, to kayak, and I really appreciate what Smamish has to offer, in terms of the forest land that we have, the hiking trails that we have. And what excites me is the opportunity to keep our forest lands healthy, and to keep our entire ecosystem healthy, for the benefit of the forest itself, for the benefit of our citizens of all ages, especially kids, who can learn about the environment through their local parks, which is how I learned out, how I learned about the environment and about the wilderness, growing up hiking in local parks in the Midwest. And that's my interest in the Parks and Recreation Commission. I recently became a native plant steward, and so now I get the opportunity to do real hands-on work in the parks in that capacity, and that's how I learned about the opportunity to serve on the Parks Commission, to have an even broader impact.
Excellent. Okay, we do have some questions for you. So, Councilmember Trine.
So, if appointed to the Parks Commission, what would be the top... Thought my voice was loud enough. So, if appointed to the Parks Commission, top three priorities in your estimation, what would be the top... would be the top three things you'd look for?
Healthy forest lands, increasing the forest lands if possible, trail systems. I think those would be my top three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Member Ross.
What do you think of the balance of recreational versus passive-use space? And do we need more of one or the other, in your opinion?
I don't really have an opinion on that. I don't know, at this point, what the, you know, if there's any concerns about the degree to which those two interests are served or not. We need both.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, where are you from in the Midwest?
Iowa.
Ah.
Davenport, Iowa.
Oh, very good. You have, you have a couple other ones in the Midwest, if you're saying, gotta ask.
We're all out here for the same reason.
Got to get out of the snow.
Got to get out of the snow, yeah. Yeah, I like the one, one week a year of snow, it suits me just fine.
Exactly, it's, yeah, it doesn't last from November till May.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in, and it was that easy. I mean, it was simple, simple.
Great, great, thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, all.
There you go. We're, we're just gonna, it's pretty casual, we're just gonna take a couple minutes and have you introduce yourself, and, you know, what got you to put your application in, and tell us a little bit about yourself. And then we're just gonna ask a couple of questions, and it's pretty easy.
Great, all right, sounds good. So, my name is Mark Perry, and I'm interested in the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so, background on myself, my wife, my children, and I moved to Washington State in 1995, from Utah. We're actually residents of California. Utah was a short stint. But since then, we've lived in Woodenville, and since 2014, we've lived in the city of Smamish. And we've had frequent outings, you know, whether that's with the kids at various parks, Beaver, you know, Smamish, whatever, utilizing trails, out with our dogs in the dog parks and on the trails. And I'm an avid biker, so I enjoy biking around the area as well. I've been employed for 37 years in the information technology sector or industry, for the last 25 years, for a large software company headquartered in Redmond, Washington. And I retired in September.
Congratulations.
And I had a calling, thank you. So, you can say Mark's in transition. I had a calling, and that calling was to serve others. I felt in a managerial role, I served my people, as I was a leader in an organization for the majority of my career. And I felt servant, being a servant of my people is extremely important. So, I want to actually transition from that to a more, you know, public and serve the community, and do it in various ways. So, I focused a lot of my attention around my career and my family and providing for my family. And then I stepped back and said, okay, not that that's always accomplished, but I think I achieved a lot there. What can I achieve individually that would satisfy me in the future? And so, I've been volunteering a lot with the Washington Trails Association, W2A, in doing trail work and other activities that they're involved in, as well as associated with many different social services organizations on the situation we have in Washington State around homelessness. So, I'm kind of crafting out an area around healthier community. And so, when I read the Parks and Recreation and Open Space, the Pro Plan, I connected with the mission around a healthier environment for our people, and what being outdoors can do for people. And so, that is the connected tissue between Washington Trails Association, as well as the Park and Recreation Area. You can say I have an interest to get more people outside so they're healthier. But on the homeless side, I want to get people indoors so they're healthier. So, there is that connection. So, I believe I can use my experience over the course of my career around how do I help influence, how do I help advocate, how do I help build teams, how do I ensure that we're, it's collaborative, a collaborative effort, where we're listening to each other and partnering and communicating and agreeing to things commonly. So, I view that I can bring some of those skills to what is necessary in continuing to move the Pro Plan forward, which I feel is extremely important. As our community grows, that plan shows an evolution of the Parks and Recreation and Open Space. And participating in that would be extremely interesting, and I think would provide me something that would fulfill me and others in my transition. And I thank you for considering my application.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple of questions for you. Deputy Mayor.
What's one thing that's missing from our park system, in your opinion?
Yeah, it's actually, it's an interesting question, because I look at it from a standpoint of the Parks Commission is, one of the things I do think of is the services that are provided are extremely rich and broad for the people, as well as the communication is extremely good, I feel. Part of my role in the past has been leading an organization around communications from a marketing perspective. So, I think the communication to community is very good. I do think that, since I am a dog owner, I think that there could be a little more in the way of dog parks.
He just took my question.
And so, I have two colt retrievers, and, you know, size of dog, does that matter? But, you know, we do live on Lakes of Mamish in a fairly small lot. And so, we do take them to the park a lot. So, as the community grows, and I see more and more interest around pets and dogs, you know, that would be one area that I'd say, hmm, we may want to give a little more attention to. I am an avid biker, so biking on the trails. So, the other thing I would, and I'm sure the Commission has thought about this, and the community has thought about this, but there's various things that I would associate my background with, with things that I think may be challenging in the future. So, maybe not missing, but maybe thought of differently, or thought of in a way that's evolving based on the community's interests and needs, e-bikes on trails. There's a speed limit. I haven't seen an e-bike go that speed limit yet. Nothing wrong with that. I'm a biker, I don't mind e-bikes, but in a multi-use trail, I don't know what to do there, but I think there's some opportunity there. Walking, and I hear a drone on, on top, you know, I'm in the technology industry, I accept that, but I'm not sure many people would. So, how does our policies and laws consider things of those types? So, I know I gave you more than one, but they're just kind of thinking about the future as well as what I see as more of an immediate need, maybe around more dog parks.
Thanks.
Wow, that was, I was just thinking of the dog parks, but that was a really good answer. So, questions, so, I have a question that's kind of related to, can you expand a little bit on, one of the things that continues to come up is bike lanes, bike space, bike. To me, it seems like we have a lot of bike paths, but maybe perhaps they're, the problem is, is they're not cleared, or clean. What, what do you see as the issue there, or do you think we need more?
I'm not sure I'm educated enough or have the data to say we need more. So, I can't go there without the data. I could say that, like on the Smamish Trail, I find it very valuable when I ride around the lake, that on the west side, there's markings for pedestrians, walking, and bike lane. There is not that on this Mamish Trail as an example, so maybe lanes would be helpful. I also think with being a biker and trying to respect others that are not bikers, educating bikers. So, whether that's a, working with organizations like Cascade Bicycling, or whomever, to educate bikers. I hate to say that, because I am a biker, but I'm, I frequently walk the trails, and I do want somebody to signal that they're behind me, coming up pretty fast. Maybe if there were a dividing line, it'd be more natural for people to signal that they're coming behind you to pass. I don't know, I'd have to look at that. But I think that if there isn't a dividing line, it gets a little confusing for people, and people tend to wander. And that's my biggest concern as a biker, is people just tend to wander. And it's bikers, too, it's not just pedestrians or dog walkers or whatever.
I think that's a really good point. Okay, anybody have any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
It was that easy, thank you so much. Good evening.
Evening.
I'm hoping this is super casual, very easy. Take a couple minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you put your application in, and what got you interested, and what got you excited about it. And then we're just going to ask a couple questions, and it's real easy.
Okay, so, a little bit about me, I have been living in Smamish since 2013. And I love it, living here. The reason I say it, because it's easy to say than, I mean, hard to express, really, because I have worked with two companies all my life, Ericsson and T-Mobile. And with Ericsson, I have traveled around the world, and mostly spent maximum two years in a city or a country, not more than that. So, it has been more than 10 years in Smamish and Washington. So, definitely, it means this is the best place, and I really love it.
Excuse me, your name?
Kashif, Kashif Nadim.
Thank you.
So, what, I mean, I work for T-Mobile, I manage a team of 16 engineers there, responsible for quality assurance for our network. And why I am interested in this, because me and my, I have two boys and a daughter. So, my boys and myself, we love outdoors. My daughter companies, my wife mostly, so, means stay home. So, we go out, we love, we love hunting, and I love to contribute to the community. I have been, while entering for T-Mobile, Emergency Response Team, I'm chair for the Safety Committee over there, too. And also, I volunteer for the Lake Washington School District. And recently, my son also, when he came to know during one of the Thursday market, this Friday mark, the Thursday market, he came to know about Explorers program. So, so last year, he started, joined the Explorer program. So, I mean, that's what we do, we love, and being here.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we have got Council Member Gamblin.
What part do you like specifically around town? Do you have a favorite?
In the town, my favorite part?
Correct, in Smamish.
So, the Kelsey Creek Park is, not the Kelsey, Yvonne's Creek Park, that's my favorite, because that's where me and my boys go around the year, to hike and spend some evening times over there. So, that's my favorite part. It's not far from my home, also, it's well-maintained, and decent hike, too. So, if, sometimes my father-in-law, he's visiting us during summers from overseas, so he can also walk with us during, in the flat area, so he doesn't go hike up. So, we leave him there, and we go hike up. So, that's our best part of the town, or favorite.
I had a question, actually. What is your, what would be your number one interest, if you, getting involved in the parks board? What would be your interest? Would it be bikeways? Would it be tree preservation? Would it be, you know, what, what, what would draw you?
So, I mean, I have been seeing, I mean, since last 10 years, the city has been growing. I understand it's the need for us, it's, it's part of the process, and we have to grow and accommodate all that. But at the same time, it has been hurting when I see all the trees, we are losing all the trees and green areas, which was making this area beautiful, and really, one of the temptation for me to stay here. So, that has been hurting me. So, I want to explore more, to learn more about it, by getting involved into it. Like, what can we do differently? I mean, one way is, you can stand outside and talk about it, that's a different story. But you will not know the whole depth and the details and facts unless you get involved. That's one of the reasons I want to get involved and know more about how our park system works, how our, and this was one, I mean, I also was interested in planning and parks, both commissions, and that was the reason, because I wanted to involve either in planning, like, what can we do, what is our future to see, and contribute whatever I can in my best capacity.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Well, that's it, it was that simple. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much, nice meeting you.
Hello, how are you?
Good. We're just going to have you tell us your name, and a little bit about yourself, and what got you interested in putting in an application, and, and then we're just going to have a couple of questions, super easy, real casual.
I can do it, I think I can do it, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kevin Pizaski. I am a Smamish resident now of 30 years.
Wow.
And I wrote this down, it's pretty impressive, before, Yolali Park had a pond.
Wow.
Didn't have a pond 30 years ago, I believe, yeah. So, yeah, and I'm just, I'm a big user of our parks, from running in Beaver Lake Park to biking the trails. I live at Pine Lake, and I use the lake quite frequently to swim from May to October. End up over at this.
Not just late July and August.
Oh, no, no, I got in, I got in, like, three years ago, I got in May 3, and I was out November 3, but it's a full wet suit.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've got to.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So, I just, I love the city, I've, I try to contribute as much as I can. Now that I have more time, I'm semi-retired, I pick up, I think I put in my application, I pick up litter, that's my thing. I walk down 212th, I go through some of the local neighborhoods, and I pick up garbage. I've helped, I volunteered one time over at E-Bright Park.
You're a my neck of the woods, so thank you.
Pardon me?
You're a my neck of the woods, so thank you.
That's right, yes, yeah. So, I now have the time to give back to the city that I dearly enjoy. Both of my kids graduated, our kids graduated from Skyline. And so, just want to do more.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, we have some questions for you.
Okay.
Council Member Trin.
Top three priority, yeah, top three priorities for you, if you're put onto the Parks Commission, what would you?
Well, I, what I look at around here is one, is just the overall integrity of the parks that we have. And we have a phenomenal system right now, so it's maintaining that integrity, having them clean, safe for our people to use. I've thought of, that would be one, getting more utilization out of them. I know here, we used to have people giving exercise classes in the area. I don't know if we do that here on this, on the campus anymore. I believe over at Beaver Lake Park, we do. But I'd like to see more, more opportunities for people to do that, whether it's, you know, Zumba, or Pilates, or yoga, see more use with that. I'd like to see better bike paths. An improvement to that would be the spine that we're talking about here, getting a bike path that continues along the north-south terminus of the area that we're building over here. I'd like to see a bike path down to the East Lake Smamish Trail. We don't really have a good path yet. I have a couple ideas. ideas. There's 22 acres of land that's available for development off of 212th that I know you could put part of a path in through there. But right now, we don't really have a good, a good bike path that gets us to a soon-to-be 45 mile long, or 44 mile long trail. So those would be my three. Integrity, maintaining the integrity of the parks, bike paths, and also I really like to see more utilization of some of the parks that we have today and/or the partnering with the Lake Washington School District and the Izziquah School District on getting more access to the, their tracks, their, their fields. I, we use on Tuesday nights, we meet over at the Pine Lake Middle School and a group of us do the run. And the lights are off. Is there, what can, what can we do to partner with the Izziquah School District to get those lights on from 6 to 9 o'clock at night? Things like that. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I agree with you. You used to walk the track at the high school in the evenings. There's a bunch of old people and
Yeah.
They don't have the lights on anymore.
Right.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor.
All right.
You may have sort of answered the question that I asked previously, which is what's one thing missing from our parks systems?
That would, to me, first and foremost, it'd be, it'd be a great trail bike path getting down to the East Lake Smamish Trail. I also see other opportunities too with improvements, a indoor facility that we could have here for indoor, whether it be indoor soccer, pickleball. I know you're talking about doing that over by Pine Lake Middle School, the property behind that. I looked into that. I don't know if that's happening yet or not. I don't believe it is. But I'd love to see something like that. We really have, I know we've partnered with the YMCA as our community center and de facto pool, but I'd like to see more opportunities for indoor facilities.
I'm curious, as you envision a, a trail going from, you know, up on the plateau down, are you thinking paved trail? Because you'd mentioned 22 acre parcel that we, yeah. Are you, are you talking unpaved or paved?
I'd, I'd love to see a paved trail.
Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I mean, Thompson Hill right now is a, has a really good shoulder on it. And the improvement to, to 12th, there's a great shoulder on there as well. But we don't really have a designated route, if you look on a map, showing people how to get off the plateau onto the, onto the trail system.
I wonder if we need to add that. Because we just, we did just put in a bike lane down on Inglewood, but that's kind of more central than
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it is. But it gets you down to the trail.
Okay, yeah. I honestly, I didn't, I didn't know we did that. Is it, is it one with the green stripes on it? Or is it just a, is it a
No, it's just, yeah.
Okay, which is great.
But it is just on a singular side there. But, okay.
Downhill side, not that uphill side.
Yeah.
Need it on the uphill parts.
Yeah, the uphill tends to be a little more difficult. Yeah. Great.
Always is.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Wonderful. It was that easy.
Thank you.
Right? Thank you so much for coming in. Welcome. So we're just going to have you state your name and tell us a little bit about yourself and what got you excited to put in an application and kind of what your focus is. And it's super casual. And then we're just going to ask a couple of questions. So just take a deep breath and off you go.
Hi, I'm Tasha Lamry. I am a mother of three and I'm on three different school-level PTAs.
Wow.
And just really working on getting some more clubs set up in the schools and listening to the kids and the parents, you know, what their needs are and trying to do what I can to, to support the, the circle that I have influence in right now. I got interested because I saw an ad that said, you want to give back to your city. And then there was a bunch of commissions. And then I got curious about that and just started really researching what ones, you know, what each one did. And Human Services really aligned with the stuff that I already kind of interested in and really want to get more involved in and get more active in the community.
Okay, a mom of three. I've been there. God love you. Okay, so we have got some questions for you. First, Councilmember Ross.
Thank you. With respect to service delivery, do you prefer the direct, which is staffed by the city, versus indirect model, which is largely delivered by a service provider or, and/or not-for-profit and why?
Well, I know we have to delegate and we have to pick what can be utilized, you know, how we utilize our resources. So it would depend on the situation and what the background is and what, you know, who's better suited for the specific event or activity. But I think that it'd probably be better to stick, in overall, to stick with city. That way it's aligned with what the city wants versus whatever an outside resource might have as their own agendas.
Thank you.
And then I have Deputy Mayor.
So we have a lot of different specialties, if you will, currently represented on our Health and Human Services Commission. Do you have a particular specialty? And when I say that, you know, some people are, you know, like youth services and council, counselors in their background. They may be a health provider, an attorney, something like that. Do you have something of that nature that you're aligned with as far as that commission? It's okay if you don't. I'm just curious.
I am definitely a lot more aligned with the youths and who directly interact with them. So obviously, parents. But it's an interest of the youths. So that would be more where I would, and that's also the realm that I have touchpoints with, so.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, it was that simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, super casual. We're just going to have you give us your name and tell us a little bit about yourself and what got you excited about putting in an application. And then we're just going to ask a couple of questions.
Okay, sounds good. There you go. Yeah. My name's Kelly Lion King. I've lived in Smamish eight years. I've been in the region minus some college years since 94. So I've been, been in the area for a long time and just watching everything change around here. But the last couple of years, I've been not coming to meetings as much, but being very involved online with the comings and goings of things. And so I've gotten rather interested and wanted to help be a part of it. As I've volunteered with things throughout time, I enjoy volunteering and being helpful. And I, it's fun to see more, as you, if you read the documents, you get more in-depth details of what's happening and to kind of weigh both sides, because there's always pros and cons. And, you know, try to help find what's best for Smamish.
Okay, I've got questions for you.
Yes.
First question I have is from, oh, okay. I, first question I have is from Deputy Mayor.
I still have my light left on. Now I'm trying to think of a question. Go ahead, down to Councilmember Ross.
Okay. Then we're going to go down to Councilmember Ross.
Hi, Kelly. What do you think are the strengths and weaknesses of the current town center plan?
All right. I think some of the strengths are that they are trying to, trying to achieve kind of that balance with nature. I don't think it goes far enough with that. But also trying to make more units affordable for other income levels other than the giant houses that we have around here. And also, you know, more single level, like this is outside the town center. But, you know, the houses for seniors to be able to like, you know, age in place kind of thing. But, you know, we do need more places to, for businesses to go, for people that want to. But I, I don't know if it's a little far-reaching as for what they want to do. And they haven't put as much details into the town center as like, I'd like to see to really go one way or the other about it. But that's just some of the stuff. And definitely a weakness was their water retention. It was very, very low. I'd like to see it much higher personally.
And now Deputy Mayor.
So if you were selected to be on the Planning Commission, from a land use standpoint, what is one thing you would change in Smamish?
In Smamish? Kind of crazy idea, but instead of like for the houses to just have one house in the thing, maybe more duplexes or something. So that way we could like, kind of, still kind of retain the like trees and that kind of atmosphere, but not go, you know, kind of that would be one of the ones I'd do. That answers.
Very good. It was that simple. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening.
Hello.
This is going to be super casual, super easy. We're just going to have you tell us your name and a little bit about yourself and what got you interested in putting in an application. And then we're just going to ask a couple of questions.
Okay, I think I can handle that. My name's Mike Brusco. I've lived in Smamish for 25 years. And as you know, I'm applying for the Planning Commission. So just a little bit of background, I recently retired.
Congratulations.
I had a job that had, yeah, I had a job that had me traveling almost every week. Fun fact, I've flown over 3 million miles. And so as you might imagine, I haven't been able to do a lot of community-related work, nonprofit-type work, which is a passion of mine. And so I decided to actually retire a bit early and pursue what I'm viewing as essentially a second career. Not going to be getting paid, but, you know, viewing this as a, a big change in what I'm doing. So I've been mostly doing what I consider arms and legs kind of volunteer work. Tomorrow, I'm doing trail work with Washington Trails Associations, for example, and other things as well. But I knew with my business background and, and really the career that I've had that I needed to do a little bit more where my volunteer work would have more impact. And as I learned about the Planning Commission, I thought that was really potential, really good fit. What I know about the Planning Commission is it has a number of responsibilities in terms of the types of advice that it provides to council. And the commissioners need to be able to look into detail a wide variety of things like, you know, cell towers and traffic and so forth and make sense of all of that. They need to listen to all sorts of input from various stakeholders and, and do trade-offs. They need to make, create visions and plans and be able to provide advice and, and be okay if that advice isn't taken. And so I think that my background, as you'll see in a moment or two, it really is a pretty good fit. Career-wise, I have master's degrees in civil engineering and business administration. I worked as an engineer, business leader, and as a consultant. As an engineer, I did road and structure design. As a business leader, I had a number of different responsibilities. One that I'll point out is that I was the global manager and president for Alcoa Packaging Equipment. Had responsibility for operations in Germany, Brazil, Japan, and the US. And what's, the reason I'm pointing that out is that I'd done work in each of those countries prior. And the country managers asked, really asked that I be promoted into this global role because they saw me as somebody who could really work across those cultures and the various needs of their constituencies, if you will. My consulting roles, I actually was a partner with a management consulting firm. We did lean process, lean management type work. And in that role, I, I worked with a number of different organizations, the aerospace supply chain, automotive supply chain, education, Department of Defense, just a wide variety. Often working with the Board of Directors and the executive suite, right down to the front line. So very broad, varied experience. I'll point out, one specific application was that our firm did work with Seattle Children's in the design of the Bellevue Clinic. And we brought the lean thinking to that, but also facilitated the collaboration between the architects, the administrative leaders of the hospital, the surgeons, the docs, all of the staff. And that particular clinic is an award-winning clinic. It's viewed as a model of efficiency, was brought together under budget. So I hope you've seen in that brief introduction that the experience is pretty well-suited for being on the Planning Commission. And that I hope that that would help to earn your vote for me as you consider in the next little bit. So, any questions?
We do have questions. Okay, so first is Councilmember Gamlin.
So you probably know Smamish is going through some changes. And it sounds like you have enough of a civil engineering background. Do you have any input on changes that you see in land use and how our infrastructure is developing in Smamish?
Well, that's like this, whatever, $64,000 question, right? I've seen through my travels how some other organizations or cities have handled some of the rapid growth and doing things, for example, like having larger boundaries between some of the main highways and the developments. Being able to do nice combinations of retail space that included restaurants of, you know, various types, you know, higher cost, lower cost, along with relatively compact housing. That's not like the 10-story apartment buildings. And, and that seems to work reasonably well, given good planning.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so with your civil engineering and you kind of briefly mentioned it, what experience, if any, do you have in terms of being able to help us make sure that whatever projects we work on moving forward or whatever we choose to do, that we can have an eye on the environment and sustainability and, and just improve or reduce our footprint on the planet?
Well, I think some of that comes from civil engineering and understanding, you know, slopes and what slopes can do. That goes deep back into my past, but I actually did a lot of work early on in how soils managed through earthquakes, for example. And I know that's an important consideration, given some of the slopes that we have around here and the drainage and so forth. And so I wouldn't be able to say, oh, I've got the engineering license expertise to, you know, do the consulting on that. But I would certainly be able to understand what the consultants have to say. And then I think, you know, also to mention in terms of understanding land use and the tree canopy and so forth. And I think part of what I also bring, I'm sure lots of other candidates do, is some of the passion for the outdoors here. And, you know, how to, how to make use of the parks that we have, which is actually pretty considerable, make them accessible to people and, you know, make sure that they're maintained and, and people actually know that those resources are here. So probably in those, those two areas.
Okay, and then we have a question from Councilmember Ross.
Yes. Can you tell me, share some of the strengths and weaknesses from your perspective of the existing town center plan?
Well, from what I understand, so I obviously stated a little bit, but not, not in detail and wasn't involved with the early parts. It's clear that there's some debates now about that basic plan. And that lots changed since it was put together, both the overall growth of Smamish and the traffic considerations, the tree canopy and so forth. So I think, you know, the strength is to have, you know, something that draws the community together and, and the vision for the And the vision for that is important. The way it tries to make use of, you know, some of the natural environment is important. But clearly, there's been so many changes, so much growth, that the ability to kind of rethink some of that and take some further input from citizens, like the popcorn for planning that's being, you know, considered, is going to be important to be able to reflect some of the new realities that we face.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. And that's it. It was that simple.
Cool. Relatively painless. Thank you.
And Melanie, is that, that's it?
Yes. That's the last person we had to interview. There are, however, four people to consider for the Planning Commission. But just two of them didn't come.
Okay.
And Stan and Nancy and Sudheshna will all be just reappointed because they're current commissioners that received 100% of the votes that were cast. So it really leaves you with, so you'll have one position to fill on the Human Service Commission. And two... Right. Yeah. Terry couldn't come tonight, but he's still to be considered.
Okay.
And then on the Parks Commission, I think you have three openings, but Nancy Wade will fill one, so that'll leave two. And they all came tonight, so that's good. And then on the Planning Commission, you have two positions open. You interviewed two, and two could not be here tonight. No, one could not be here tonight, and one withdrew. Yes. And Matt Ferguson, he couldn't make it either. So...
Okay.
And that's it. Oh, and the Arts Commission, there's actually four vacancies, so one is a returning commissioner, which, and that leaves two four-year terms, and then one three-year term. So you can place either candidate in any of those. And we'll keep recruiting for that last vacancy.
Okay.
So, yeah. That's it.
Okay. Okay. So that will conclude our interviews. Which takes next to executive session to evaluate the qualification of applicants for public employment pursuant to RCW 42.30.110-1G. And, let's see, how much time? And it says 15 minutes.
You want check?
I want a check as well. So for the Arts Commission?
I don't have an appropriate resolution.
Right. No, don't worry about her. Just literally, just...
But for like ones where there are more, you want them stack-ranked or just?
You need to go under unfinished business, and then it's number 12, that's council voting.
Right.
If we have to do a second round?
We're appointing three members.
Oh, oh, oh.
So we shouldn't have to do that for Arts?
Right.
That's really bad. Yeah. Can you just say?
Yeah. You have to...
Two and then this way. Okay, okay. I see. Okay. And then four and five. Okay. Okay. Wait, 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 wait.
Just a check. You need a one or a two on the other ones?
I have both of my hands.
Do we? Because isn't it just the top? No, I don't think you do. I just think it's just the top vote-getters.
It's a check.
Yeah. That's what I thought. Yeah.
Thank Pam. I'm just collecting. I'm the collector over here.
You can have that on here.
No, no, we're not voting on all of these right now, are we?
No.
Okay. She's... No, it's not. Okay. She had Health and Human Services. That's why I was like, what are we doing here?
I can do whatever when I want. I'm doing them in the order I was doing them.
Heard of people like you.
Green.
I know. It's me.
I'm done with this one.
Move to Human Services.
No. We have to do a resolution.
We have to do a resolution.
Hold on. But she's got to pull it up. She'll pull it up on your screen in front of you. Yeah.
Yeah. We're just going to do the winner.
Okay. I have Mark.
He had to turn in his R2.
I don't have the R2.
But you did.
Oh.
Lita voted for you.
All right. There you go. It's going to be Kristi making the motion.
What are the position numbers?
I don't know that.
These are different.
Oh, yeah. It says three. There's no position numbers listed.
Nope.
Oh, there is. Okay. There is. It's in the resolution. I got it. Yep. Okay. So I'd like to move that we appoint Janet Hill to position number seven, Sandra Pierce to position number eight, and Sudheshna Dixit to position nine. Is that okay?
No.
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 All right. Well, then you've got to tell me who goes where, Melanie.
Sandra Pierce is number eight, and...
No.
Or...
Oh.
Nine, and then Sudheshna Dixit is eight.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. And Sandra is where?
Nine.
Nine.
Sandra's nine. Okay. All right. So I would like to withdraw my motion, and I will move that we appoint Janet Hill to position number seven, Sudheshna Dixit to position eight, and Sandra Pierce to position nine.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That is a 7-0 for the record. That'll be the end of that.
Next? All right. Human Services.
Just pick one.
You don't have to hide it because she's going to put it up on the board, so.
I'm going to be exposed.
Yes. You wanted them stack-ranked, right? No. I think we just put one on that one. Oh. You said stack-ranked.
All right. Can't you tell by the one and the two? I mean, I'm just saying.
She did ask for stack-ranked, didn't she?
She has, in the past.
Okay. Trying to follow the rules. I really am.
Labrum malum. We're having way too much fun down here.
Hey. You know what? Life is short. Life is short now. And if Chris puts up in the water, then I'm getting it too, so.
I have no access to the agenda. Downloads aren't working.
Must not be on the line.
And my iCompass doesn't give me an agenda.
You must not be online.
I am. I'm at Lila. I just checked it.
Oh, you're on the staff. Why are you on staff? You're on guest. I don't know, but why are you on that? You should be on guest. Hmm. I don't know.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Stan Lee Gano to position number three and Howard Hall to position number four.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's a 7-0 vote. For the record.
You just voted aye.
Oh, 5 to 2 votes.
No, we voted on the motion. You voted on the motion, which was to appoint this. Yeah.
That's right.
Bless you.
No one is a loser in this.
Yeah.
So you want a one and a two, or just checks for her?
Or just checks.
Okay.
Oh, you only want two people?
Two people?
Yes.
All right.
I think we should do a stack-ranked.
That's really hard.
If you don't get two people that get a majority, then isn't it easier for stack-ranked?
That's why we have extra sheets. Wait, that says Parks won. We're voting for two, right?
We're only voting for one, correct?
Two.
Two.
There were three four-year vacancies. Nancy Wade gets reappointments. You have a vote for two. So Melanie, on this resolution, those terms are different. So do we put the top vote getter in the longer term?
I would.
Okay. All right. So I would move that we appoint Kevin Pozasky to position number five, Nancy Wade to position number eight, and Mark Perry to position number nine.
Second. Assuming that those line up with what you said in terms of the... Okay.
Okay. Assuming all that was said was accurate, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would be a 7-0 for the record.
No cheating, guys.
Are you guys cheating down there?
Yeah. They are.
That was school teacher.
Look, he was just confirming the answer.
That's a great one.
We were using our resources wisely, not a man. Yeah. I've heard them all.
No, that's Chris's. No. Am I, could I? Is that an option? Oh, no. Okay.
These two are back there waiting on beta bread. They don't have that on their...
Okay. So I would move that we appoint Karthik Seether Ramen to position number one and Mike Bresko to position number two.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. And all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
A nay? Okay. We have a 6 to 1 for the record. Okay. Okay. Nice job, group. You got through that pretty quickly, pretty painlessly.
Don't forget the consent item that was pulled.
Yes. So next on is 16A. And I'm going to turn that over to you, since you pulled it.
I did. So I pulled this item not because I don't think that the item is complete, and I sent an email to the council this morning, as well as our city manager. And I just wanted, so it included two pictures, and it's worth noting here that we're accepting this as a complete project. And then we had a ton of stormwater come down the hill and uncompleted it for us. The culvert is almost blocked from Kokoni being able to get to it. And I did ask in my email of our acting city manager that council just simply be looped in. Did the Kokoni Working Group meet today or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And my ask is simply, and our acting city manager said he can't take direction from me, although we do have a representative from staff as well as council that are attending those, and my ask is simply that those get elevated back to council in a fairly quick manner, because to have a culvert that we just spent $1.3 million on to open, to basically have it closed again, is really kind of sad. So my, again, I am going to formally move that we ask for whatever the Kokoni Working Group comes forward with kind of the acute fix for this problem in particular, to be elevated to council so that we can be apprised and potentially take action.
Doesn't that usually come in the form of the minutes that we always get?
Yeah. We're going to meet tomorrow, so we'll come back with some fresh information, probably sooner than the minutes are published, possibly. So, well, we don't have another meeting in front of us, so might have to just email it from the Kokoni Work Group. Chip, is Danica going to be attending tomorrow for the city staff?
Danica.
And I have Cheryl passed in here to answer some basic questions.
So she'll be there, I'll be there. And so collectively, I guess we'll come back. She's more tied into the project, so perhaps Danica could maybe send out us email status. I can work with her, give my input.
I don't know that the Kokoni Working Group's necessarily going to come to a conclusion on what should occur with that particular culvert tomorrow at their meeting, but I'm just interested in making sure that as we have further development, that we're not carrying down as much sediment as has come down in a year span and essentially undoing all of the work that we had a ton of volunteers out there doing. We've got some grant funding, but clearly, like, that rain event that we had in December, whether that moved all of that down, or if it's a product of, you know, multiple rains, we have to plan for those. And we probably lost every red we had in our salmon-bearing streams based on that rain event. So our planning efforts going forward for stormwater just need to be able to capture these rain events, because they could literally wipe out that species. But it's my understanding that they would prefer that we wait until the summer and not do it now. We, we could do it now, what we would, some of the, what we would have to do is basically dam up the creek, shock the fish to, to make sure there aren't any, and then bypass pump the creek, and, and, you know, and doing it in this kind of weather, I would not recommend it.
Totally understandable, yeah. Just looking for kind of that game plan. And I know that may take some time to come to fruition.
It will, it will actually take quite a bit of time, but she's already started that conversation, so I'm sure she'll bring more information to the Kokoni Work Group tomorrow.
Very good.
And then in regards to changing any of our, any of our standards, we, you know, if the council so wishes, we certainly could, will do that, if that's what the council wants. I know there was some, some people saying that the town center did not have to completely control their stormwater runoff. That was the case, I think it was in 2013, Resolution 2013 559, there was, the council at the time did approve a reduced detention requirement. However, for those of you who were on council in 2016, might remember that we repealed that section, and they have to comply with.
With stormwater regulations.
Yes, with the stormwater regulations. So that is what, that is in effect right now.
Yeah.
Cheryl, if we could maybe get some kind of report that this is gonna be.
Your button.
I'm sorry.
Being recognized.
Do you want to recognize me?
Do you want to recognize me?
No. Council member, Gamlin.
So we have another spawning season next year?
Yes, we do.
Do we have any indication on where we're gonna be? Are we gonna be back to 100%? Are we gonna have everything cleaned out and set to go for October?
Our, our plan is to present the fix to council along with the cost. Our, our hope is to get it cleaned out before the, the next spawning season, yes. And Danica, I, I know we're really concerned about the reds. I think Danica said that they, I don't believe that we saw any Kokoni spawning in Zaccus this year, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, I don't think we did either, but I'm just guessing if that sediment load.
But there's other fish.
Exactly.
Right, there's other fish, certainly.
Yep. Well, and the sediment load in Zaccus is probably similar into some of the other creeks that did have spawning, so. Okay. So I will move for acceptance of this final project for Zaccus Creek Fish Passage and Stream Restoration Project.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a six to one vote for the record. Also, can you make sure that Danica's working with the King County Flood District to get the emergency funds, if we need some for clearing out that area? And if, if I can do anything, because I'm on that committee, let me know. Okay, so the next is new business, and we have got council, city manager report and council reports.
Don't we have another, do we have another executive session?
It's after.
Oh, after, that's fine.
So, Deputy Mayor?
I am not going to read you my written report.
Thank you. Which leads us to executive sess.
Nope.
No report. Okay, leads us to executive session. Litigation pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1I. I've got it down for 30 minutes.
Do you want your 20? Oh, we're not, we're not doing that.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor part?
All those in favor!
Aye.
For the record.
5-0, because.
That's right.
We're missing council members.
That's not mine, I think they were.
Hey, we're out of here by 9:30.
That's good. 9.
20.
21. You have it better.
I like it to see my gun. Tired.